7:30, this is the regular council meeting for June 24th. Clerk, can you please do a roll call?
Mayor Protem Bliss.
I'm here.
Councilman Fleming.
Here.
Councilman Muir.
Here.
Counselor Rohrbach.
Here.
Councilman Soltis.
Here.
Counselor Wright.
Here.
And Mayor Graffstein.
I am here, thank you. The invocation and pledge of allegiance this evening will be led by Counselor Wright. I invite you to stand if you would like.
As we gather here today, we are reminded of the profound significance of our shared history and the strength found in our collective diversity. Today, we honor Juneteenth, a day of liberation and a pivotal moment in our nation's journey toward justice and equality. We remember the resilience and strength of those who fought for freedom and recognize the ongoing struggle for civil rights. May we be inspired by the courage and commitment to creating a world where liberty and justice are truly for all. In the same spirit of inclusion, we celebrate Pride Month, a time to honor the LGBTQ community and their relentless pursuit of equality. Let us remember the diversity that enriches our society. We also acknowledge Men's Health Awareness Month, recognizing the importance of mental health, well-being for all. We encourage open conversations, understanding, and support for men facing mental health challenges. Let us foster an environment where seeking help is seen as a strength, not a weakness, and where every person feels valued and supported. And finally, as we approach Independence Day, we reflect on the principles that founded this great nation: freedom, equality, and the pursuit of happiness. We honor the sacrifice that made those who came before us and the commitment ourselves of holding these ideas in our daily values. May we continue to work towards a more perfect union, one that embraces all of its citizens with fairness and compassion.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first up, we actually have the appointment of the acting city clerk. Can I please get a motion to appoint Annette Boucher as our clerk for the evening?
Your Honor.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, support.
Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. All right, motion carries. First up, we have approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions this evening?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Can we move the Madison Heights Chiropractor Anniversary Proclamation from consent to perentations, please?
Yes. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Yes.
All support.
Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. Are there any other additions or deletions?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to add to the agenda, the item to, for Counselor Quinn Wright to step aside from the MHCC, the Madison Heights Community Coalition, and for Bill Muir to be the new council rep.
All right. Point of order, is that something we can just put in the consent agenda? All right, so I will put that in as 3A. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Yes.
All support.
Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. Are there any other additions or deletions? All right, seeing none, we are going to move to the first item of the day, of the evening, which is our presentations, and we are going to have our Madison Heights Chiropractor 50th Anniversary Proclamation. So whereas this year marks the 50th golden anniversary of Madison Heights Chiropractor Center, and whereas Dr. Alan Cash has been with the business for 50 years and is a graduate from Palmer College of Chiropractic, and whereas Dr. Cash has dedicated and committed his service of excellence to help establish Madison Heights Chiropractic Center as one of the premier chiropractic clinics in the state of Michigan, and whereas Dr. Cash has an impressive list of credentials, including being the winner of the 2009 Pioneer Award of Lifetime of Loyalty Dedication and Commitment, served as board member, past president, and past chairman of the Board of Michigan Chiropractic Society and Michigan Chiropractic Association, and was Michigan Chiropractic Society's Chiropractor of the Year in 1995, and whereas over the past 50 years, Madison Heights Chiropractic Center has been committed to service, quality, client satisfaction, and restoring and maintaining the health of their patients. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of Madison Heights are proud to work with a business of this caliber, and on behalf of its citizens, do hereby extend sincerest congratulations to Madison Heights Chiropractic Center on their 50th anniversary, and extend best wishes for many more years of continued success. Dr. Cash, before we present this with you, would you like to make, say a few words, make a statement, say a few words? Actually, sorry, Dr. Cash, if you want to do a statement over at the podium. Thank you.
Here?
Yes.
In 1974, I came into Madison Heights. Funny thing was, as a young man growing up on Seven Mile and Schaefer in Detroit, I had never even heard of Madison Heights. And my older brother was a teacher here at Lampier for 40 years, and then I came into the city and opened up, and then years later, my younger brother, who's a chiropractor, did his residency in my office. And my mother used to say, "I've got three boys all way over on the east side at Madison Heights," you know? She had no idea of where this was. But I can only say that Madison Heights has brought my family and I everything, educated my children, and gave us a life, and the people of this city will always be in my heart, and the people I work with will always be in my heart. And I'm not gone yet. Luckily, the new owner of the Madison Heights Chiropractic Center, Dr. Conflitti, and his lovely wife have not allowed me to leave yet, and so I've come a little bit part-time. But I thank you all for all of this. This is wonderful, and again, thank you so much.
Okay, we're actually, we're going to take a five-minute recess now. All right, so we'll be back in five minutes. Thank you, everybody. I'm now going to open the meeting to the public. This is the opportunity for public to speak at the podium. I ask you to take...
I just wanted to add one comment. I have been a patient of Dr. Cash for over 49 years. He started in '74. My first visit with him was in March of 1975. And I would like to tell a little story. It won't take too long, but I was a teacher in Madison District Public Schools, and we did not have a contract in 1974 before the school season started. And in December, we decided we would like to do an informational picket at the board office, just to let the public know that we didn't have a contract yet. And the board office was located on John R., and across the side street was Dr. Cash's chiropractic office. It was December, it was a very cold day. We were out there with our informational picket, and his office manager came over and offered us the use of their bathroom facilities and any hot drinks we might like to have, or if anybody wanted to just come in and warm up for a few minutes. So four months later, when I needed chiropractic care, I remembered that kindness that he showed to us, and I went to him, and today I am still a patient, and one of the people telling him, "Don't retire completely yet."
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, please, go ahead.
When I, in 1983, I was 20 years old, I was going to school for a journalism degree at Oakland University, and I had the bright idea to start a newspaper, a little local newspaper. And one of the first businesses I went to was Madison Heights Chiropractic, and Dr. Cash was so understanding, he supported my business, he bought advertisements, he wrote columns even for the newspaper, and I've always appreciated that generosity. So 40 years later, thank you, Dr. Cash, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. All right, meeting is still open to the public if anyone wishes to speak this evening.
Martha Covert, Edward Avenue. I went to the Juneteenth. It was a wonderful event, Kevin. Had a really good time. And at that event, I, you know, had talked to a few people in our city, and I heard something that was rather odd to me, where they were saying, Rosalynn had said, "I've done all I can do for Madison Heights, that's why I'm going to run for county commissioner." So I thought, okay, that sounded odd, but a few people say it, they had to hear it somewhere. So then I saw an ad in the CNG. Kind of astounds me when people take credit by themselves for something you didn't do alone, but you want people to feel you did. To me, that's not right, it's not fair. Again, is this just a me thing? Maybe it is. But, so I would like to shed light, so that people know that when the county commissioners in Oakland County, who have to work with this county commissioner on a daily basis, did a vote, Rosalynn, you didn't get a vote at all, they didn't know who you were. If you had done so much for Madison Heights, I feel they would have at least known your name. You got no votes. Our Emily came in third, and Eric Singal came in first. She's the woman that's now sitting for District 3. She is from Troy. Madison Heights has held that seat since at least Mayor Suarez. This is a woman that, for the first time, is holding this position, trying to do the best she can, learning new things. And I agree, if you had, if you got that seat, you would be learning new things, too. I'm not going to, I'm not trying to trash that kind of thing, but why, I don't understand why it's necessary for Madison Heights to hold that seat. It's not. Hazel Park deserves a shot at that, Troy deserves a shot at that, because they are also part of this district. Why, why can't she just do what she's going to do? These commissioners have evidently worked with her or know her, and are backing her, saying, "We think she's going to do the best job." I, I will on this part say, I give you kudos for running for it, but I don't think you're deserving of it.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak this evening?
Thank you, Mayor Graffstein. My name is Kevin Wright. I live at 745 Canterbury Drive. I'm on the Board of Directors of Madison Heights Citizens United. I just wanted to come tonight to thank everyone who came out to the 2024 Madison Heights Juneteenth Celebration at Civic Center Park on June 15th. It was a wonderful afternoon, the weather was perfect, the food was great, the music was great, the vendors were great, everything was great. It was a great, a great afternoon. I'd really like to specifically thank our sponsors, we couldn't have done it without them. They shared in our vision for the festival and made generous donations to make it happen. I'd be remiss if I didn't also thank the Madison Heights Citizens United Board of Directors and everyone who volunteered the day of to help make the event run smoothly. Last but not least, I'd like to thank the crew from Madison Heights DPS. They had the park immensely ready, and we're thankful for all of their hard work. As I think everyone knows, next year will be our fifth annual Juneteenth Celebration in the city of Madison Heights, and we're already starting the plan and looking forward to presenting another impactful celebration of freedom in our community in 2025. For those who are interested, they can stay up to date year-round at our Madison Heights Juneteenth Facebook page or at our website, massenheitjuneeteenth.com. Thank you again, Mayor Graffstein, City Council, and all who came out to the 2024 Madison Heights Juneteenth Celebration. We're looking forward to seeing all of you next year again. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak? All right, seeing no one, I'm going to close public comment. And next up, we have the consent agenda. We have two items. One is the city council regular meeting minutes from June 10th, and the other is the addition by Mr. Wright to change the council representative for the Madison Heights Community Coalition from Quinn Wright to Bill Muir. Can I get a motion to approve?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there any support?
Your Honor.
Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. And just to clarify that this is to fill out Counselor Wright's term, which would be till November 2025?
Yes.
All right. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. And then we have reports. The first one is from the Director of Public Services. This is consent to assignment of solid waste collection and disposal agreement.
On June 4th, 2024, our current solid waste hauler, GFL Environmental, officially notified the city that they had sold their residential business to Priority Waste effective June 30. Per the terms of the city's current agreement with GFL Environmental, GFL shall not assign, transfer, or sublet this contract or any part thereof without the express written consent of the city. Any assignment, transfer, hypothecation, or subletting without the express written consent of the city shall give the city the right to terminate this contract. Given the current state of the waste hauling market and the fact that this contract expires June 30, 2025, staff recommends that the council approve the assignment of the city's solid waste recyclables and compost contract for collection, transport, and disposal to Priority Waste at Sterling Heights and authorize the mayor to sign on behalf of the city. A representative from Priority Waste was scheduled to be here this evening, however, he's been held up in another community.
All right, thank you. So can I get a motion from council to approve the consent of, for the assignment?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move that council approves the assignment of the city's solid waste recyclables and compost contract for collection, transport, and disposal on contract to Priority Waste at Sterling Heights and authorize the mayor to sign on the city behalf.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
All support.
All right, thank you. A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes.
One comment. The closing of the sale from GFL Environmental to Priority Waste is scheduled to take place June 30 of 2024, so just so that everyone's clear on this, that the motion is contingent upon that closing taking place by that date.
Okay, the maker's okay with that? I understand and support. All right, is there any other discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I would just say I'm disappointed that they were held up, and I would just ask that we have a representative at a future meeting. I think there's been some negativity around how they handled this rollout, and I think our residents are feeling that. I think there's been disruptions in service, and I believe, and, you know, I'm not going to hold it up, I will vote in favor, let's get this done, but I believe our residents deserve to hear from a representative, and so I know they couldn't make it tonight, but I'd love to have them here at the July 8th meeting.
All right, thank you. Is there any other discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I feel like deja vu, because we've had this discussion before in the firehouse, where we asked Green for Life to come once a quarter. So I know it's now priority, but I ask that they honor that commitment we asked for a few years back. So, I mean, it's a shame we have to keep revisiting this, but...
Thank you. Any other discussion, comments?
Your Honor, I mean, I think I can, for all of us, when I say that we've seen the concern of our residents, and it's, what's frustrating about this is that there's not really a choice in the market right now for us to, like, say, "Well, we're not going to do this," and if we didn't do it, we would just leave all of our residents without an option. So it is very disappointing that Party, Priority Waste, isn't here to, to talk us through it, to give us some assurances and things like that. So I know that everybody wants to hear that, wants to hear those assurances, that we will continue to receive the service that we expect. And I know also, you know, there are parts of this that include, like, the rollout of the carts, and there's all kinds of additional things that are included in this transition. I want to make sure that we are, as a city, you know, being as transparent and as communicative as possible to our residents as we know what's going on, because I know we don't have all of the information from the very beginning, because the, you know, the transition came as a surprise, I think, to our staff as well as residents, and we all heard about it pretty much at the same time. So I think that we are, there is a concern that we recognize and want to make sure is addressed. You know, one of the biggest benefits, I think, that we have had with GFL is the commitment to having a staff member assigned to our community to respond in a, in a quick manner to individuals who have missed their trash pickup on any given day, or, you know, any kind of issues. The GFL representative, Doug Jones, has been an absolute asset to this community, and I don't know what's happening with his position and what's happening with him, but I just want to say here as part of this, that I really hope that we can continue to see Doug Jones and the commitment from our contractor for this, this large contract that the city gives out, to take care of our residents and their needs every day as we go forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there any other discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes.
One other comment for the benefit of the public, and that is that our agreement with GFL Environmental is such that even though it requires our consent regarding the transfer, it also provides that our consent cannot be unreasonably withheld. And so without valid legal reasons for withholding our consent, essentially council's hands are tied to consent to the transfer.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm just going to say that I echo the concerns of many of our residents and what council has said this evening, and unfortunately, in this industry, there, there are not a lot of options. So I will be voting yes, but I would like to have someone from GFL and Priority, both of them, to have a conversation with us, whether it's at a regular council meeting or if we schedule a town hall separate from this, but I think that our residents deserve to hear what's going on with this. And with that, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. And next up, we have from the Finance Director, it's amendments to the fiscal year 2023-24 budget and carryforwards to amend the fiscal year 24-25 budget.
The state of Michigan budget law requires that any budget amendments be approved by the city council. The budget amendments are submitted to ensure that the fiscal year 2024 and fiscal year 2025 budgets comply with state law. The most significant amendments for the fiscal, fiscal year 2025 budget are the increase in revenues for interest earned due to higher interest rates and the addition of revenue for the active adult property sale proceeds, proceeds resulting in a decreased use of fund balance and the general fund fund balance. As part of the amendments, we also included fiscal year 2025 carryforwards for projects that are budgeted in fiscal year 2024 but will be expended, expended or completed in the upcoming fiscal year. Most significant are the improvements coming to Rosie's Park, the citywide park lighting project, and building maintenance improvements at the police department. Significant budget amendments for water and sewer include $590,000 of projects that we were able to begin earlier than budgeted for a total of $590,000. Staff recommends that council approve the budget amendments and carryforwards to the fiscal year 2024 and fiscal year 2025 budgets and appropriate the necessary funds.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor, I move that council concurred to staff recommendations on the amendments to the fiscal year 2023 and 2024 to 2025 budget, and approve the implementation of the amendments and appropriate, appropriate the necessary funds.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, support.
Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes.
There's a $15,000 increase under mayor and council. Could we clarify what that's for?
I believe that's education, but Ms. Kuna, if you could just confirm that?
That was for training, for attendance at the MML Conference and Mackinac Island Conference as well. There was some discussion about council attending or a number of council attending, and there wasn't budget set aside for that, so that was recognizing, putting that in the budget so that council can attend that important training.
Your Honor, is, I can't remember, and maybe Councilman Soltis does, but I can't remember a time where we've put aside $15,000 to send council to a conference at Mackinac. I don't know if there's any historical precedent to that, but it seems like a lot of money.
It's one of the more costly conferences, but it is full of a lot of information. It was my understanding that it was council's intention to send a number of delegates to that particular conference.
Okay. Well, Your Honor, if I may, I'm not going to hold up, I will vote yes, but I will ask that whatever portion of that, because there's seven council members, probably about $2,100, whatever that is, I would ask that my portion of it be assigned to a border commission like the Arts Board instead, and I'll have that conversation with staff afterwards, to be able to use that money to better bring it directly to the residents. That'll be my request.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. Motion carries. And then last up, we have from the Director of Public Services, the tree nursery and planting services.
In fiscal year 2020, a request for proposal was issued for tree nursery and planting services. The low successful bidder at the time was Marine City Nursery Company of China Township. In the four years since, Marine City has proven to be a highly responsive and competent firm, providing excellent nursery stock and timely planting services, resulting in minimal loss or warranty claims for the plants planted under the city's multiple programs. Although Marine City was able to extend their pricing for one year past the original three-year contract term, staff was informed that due to rising costs, they would not be able to do so again for the fiscal year upcoming. Staff subsequently prepared and issued an RFP and two sealed proposals were received by the deadline from Crimbole Nursery and Marine City Nursery. Upon tabulation of the bids, Marine City Nursery is again the low bidder. Based on this and their excellent performance with our tree programs, staff recommends that council award a three-year contract with the option to extend year three pricing upon mutual agreement of the parties for tree nursery and planting services to the lowest qualified bidder, Marine City Nursery Company of China Township, for the unit prices specified. Funding is budgeted and available.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'll move that we award the three-year contract with the option to extend upon mutual agreement to the lowest qualified bidder, Marine City Nursery Company of China Township, for all of the unit prices specified.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. Motion carries. And that concludes our regular portion of the meeting, and I invite closing comments, starting with Mr. Muir.
Thank you, Your Honor. As Councilor Wright mentioned in his opening, it is Men's Health Month, so take care of your physical as well as mental needs. I know I have had my fair share of doctor's appointments this month, so I'm working on that. Also, on the GFL thing, it's, as we mentioned, it's kind of a tough situation for us to be in, but the offer is for them to pick up, Priority to pick up the current contract, so nothing will change, as far as my understanding goes, until June of next year, when we have to revisit it. So I'm hearing the stories that we have to use special trash cans, but none of that is going to change until next year, if it changes. So be patient with that. GFL is struggling with losing people to Priority, so the next couple of weeks are going to be growing pains if the deal doesn't need to go through, so. And yes, I agree, we totally need someone from Priority to here to kind of reassure us that that is going to happen. It would be disappointing they weren't here tonight. I did have one other thought, but it's escaping me at the moment. That's it, Your Honor. Thanks.
Okay. Mr. Bliss?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. As usual, there's a lot to say, but I am instead going to defer my time. I'd like to take a moment of silence to the County Sheriff Deputy Bradley Reckling. It was absolute tragedy, and my thoughts and prayers are with his family right now, especially their children, but I'd like to take a moment of silence of my time. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Wright?
Yes, thank you, and I'd like to echo the sentiments of Mayor Pro Tem Bliss. It's a tragedy of huge proportions. My heart as well goes out to his family. I will, just shifting gears, yesterday was Arts and Pride, and so happy Pride Month still, to have those celebrating. Yesterday, the HRC and the Arts Board co-hosted a picnic at the park. It was fantastic. It was well-attended. I enjoyed cooking on the grill, and I also, food inspector was there, make sure everything was up to code, so. Hot dog, everything was fine, so. Food inspector came out, and but you know, more importantly, there was like, there was community had there. And apparently, I was, we had a, you know, cooking on the grill, there was like, concern on my part, you watch the cooking shows, there's always like a special ingredient, but they threw corn at me, and they were like, we're cooking corn on the grill, and I was like, oh my God! So we figured it out, it was great, it was a great time, but most importantly, people felt seen and they felt comfortable. And I heard people saying, like, you know, without like any type of being prodded or asked, they were like, I think I'm coming back next year, this is great. So good job to all the organizers, to Jen Nagel and all involved, it was a fantastic event, so. And thank you for letting me be the pit master, because that was my happy place, so. On that note, I'm excited to announce also that the HRC voted to approve the date and the time we are going to move forward a cooking show, a cooking competition and a car show called Revin' the Heights, September 14th. I'm very excited. We tried to do this in the past, but unfortunately, the weather at the end said, no, you're not doing it. But we're moving forward, and we've also got some people partnering with us, so the Fire Department is going to do their open house that same day, we're going to do it here at the Civic Center Park campus, Joyful Jungle is going to help us to have a section for the kids, so I'm inviting everyone to come out, and if you want to be a part, let us know. This is going to be a great tee-up for Trail Tunes, which is the next week, so just like our campus has been hopping in June, it's going to be hopping in September. And we're also, I haven't had the conversations yet, but I don't think there'll be a, no, maybe not, we're going to have a Mayor's Choice Award and a Fire Chief and Police Chief's Choice Award for the car show. So I think that it's going to be a good opportunity for everyone to be involved and have a little bit of fun. Just, I'll just let you know now, just put you on the...
I can't speak for anyone else, but the mayor would be happy to join you for that.
Great. I thought you'd be okay with that. So it's going to be a good time, and you know, the HRC is really trying to move some things ahead, so you know, get involved, but that's it for me, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Mr. Sherman?
Couple of comments, Your Honor. First of all, I echo the comments of Mayor Pro Tem Bliss regarding the condolences, and heart goes out to the family of Deputy Reckland. Actually, he was on a task force where he substituted in for one of our officers who had a health condition in the auto theft unit, and it's just awful, just like, just like the incident that happened a week ago Saturday at the splash pad in Rochester Hills. Our thoughts and prayers go out to the victims of that senseless act as well. I wanted to talk about the passing of our Special Environmental Council, Hugh Thomas, who died May 31st this year. In 1988, the city was very much interested in hiring Special Environmental Council to kind of hop on the coattails of a grass, citizens' grassroots group called Clean Air Please to prevent the incinerator from reopening and expanding at its current site. Dorothy Lenz, Pete Connors, and I were gathering Special Environmental law firms to talk to, and one of the law firms that I wanted to interview called me up and said, I have a conflict, I can't interview for the position, but I know this new attorney who just moved here from Chicago who would be perfect for the job. Little did we know, and in 1988, that this referral would last for over 30 years. He was our Special Environmental Council for over 30 years, and he was a tireless advocate for the city and its citizens. Every one in the city of Madison Heights owes a debt of gratitude to Hugh Thomas for everything he did to protect the interests of the city. We were the first city in the country to have a state law adopted with the help of then Senator Mike Bouchard, who stood up to other constituents of his, to adopt legislation which created a setback prohibiting a major emission source such as that from being so close to schools, senior center, single-family residential homes, and so on. And at the time, in the late 1980s, Madison Heights had the highest incidence of cancer, lung cancer, downwind from the incinerator. He also was very involved in enabling us to withdraw from SACRA and collect our equity from SACRA. He was very involved in 2014, when we had the great flood of August of 2014, and SACRA was doing some things we didn't agree with at the time, and he was led the legal team in dealing with all of that. And he was just a very special person, who loved this city, and we loved him, and he died somewhat unexpectedly at the end of last month, and he will be missed. Council gave him a great honor a few years ago by having a retirement ceremony here, and it was, it was all just very deserved. So I will miss my friend and tremendous lawyer, Hugh Thomas. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything from the city manager's office or the clerk?
I'm going to put my city clerk hat on right now.
Okay.
August 6th is our primary election coming up in the city, and I just want to remind all the voters that if you have submitted an absentee ballot application or you are on the permanent ballot list, staff is working hard right now to assemble those 4,000 ballots that will be going out at the end of this week, so please look for them in your mailbox beginning next week. I also want to remind voters that this is a primary election, although you'll see Democrats in one column and Republicans in another column, you're only allowed to vote for one of those parties, so stay in the lane that you're going to vote in. You're either voting the Democratic side or the Republican side, and then you can vote in the nonpartisan, and if there is a question, there's a question on some of the precincts in Madison Heights, but not all the precincts. And that's all I have. Oh, if you want, if you want to get an absentee ballot and you're not already on our list, you can either fill out the form online, you can come into the clerk's office, you can call us, we can send you an application, or you can go on the Secretary of State's website and fill out an online application. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything you would like to add?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Counselor Ross.
I just want to echo congratulations to all of the folks who worked so hard to put on our Juneteenth celebration. It was an amazing day, it was really just, just feels like home. I mean, this is home, right? But it just, that it's one of those events that you just feel like, this is, this is right, this is a good thing, and I really love it every time. Gets better and better and better, so thank you for all your work. And thank you to everybody on the committee for all of their work. Also, thanks to everybody who put on the Arts and Pride event. I was sad that I had to miss it, I had to take, I mean, I was, I had to take my kids to camp, so I had, I had to be out of the area during that time. I'm not sad I took my kids to camp, to be completely honest, they're gone for a week, and that's not horrible, but so, but I was very sad to have missed that event, and so I'm glad everybody had a good time. We have the festival in the park coming up, and then what I'm really excited about is the, we are once again partnering with American with Disabilities, or with the Michigan Statewide Independent Living Council, Michigan Silk, to celebrate the passing of the Americans with Disabilities Act that was passed, I think, in 1990 at, and it was on June 20, or July 26th, so the July is often in many of the disability community considered ADA Pride Month, celebrating people of all abilities. And so there is a very fun pride celebration for Americans with Disabilities Act coming to our very own Civic Center Park. Last time, we did a wonderful community art project with a mural that now hangs in our library. This year, it's going to be some really cool, some, there's going to be a street artist there doing some cool street art, there's going to be music, there's going to be tents, there's going to be all kinds of really fun community activities. Everybody is welcome to come, participate, have fun. There'll be a couple of food trucks there, I think Treat Dreams will have a truck and the Grilled Wrap, there'll be, it'll be fun. It'll be really fun, especially, you know, celebrating those in our lives who are people with special abilities and different abilities and super abilities, is what I call many of my friends with challenges, and it's so wonderful. It's going to be a really good time, so I hope to see a lot of you out there celebrating with us on July 13th at Civic Center Park. And last thing, I was driving down the street yesterday, and I was just driving down like 12 Mile here from like 75 back home, and I was like, wow, in the next couple of years, this area is going to look so different than it does now. And you know, I'm not always happy with all of the choices that happen and what's going to happen, but I thought, some, first of all, I told my husband, take a picture of this corner, because it's going to look so different, and in a couple of years, you're not going to recognize it. And then second thing I was thinking is like, look at all of these baby trees. You know, tonight, we sell, we approved a new tree contract, but, and a lot of those trees came from with the rebuilding of the road along 75, but also just all along 12 Mile, down John R., driving through neighborhoods, there are lots and lots and lots of baby trees in our city, and it's really exciting, because they, what do they say, like, blessed is the man who plants a tree knowing that he will never sit, enjoy its shade, but I feel like we're doing a great job here in the city. I, you know, our DPS is doing a great job, our community is, is making sure that we are planting those trees, because in five years, 10 years, 30 years, 50 years from now, those trees are going to be big, they're going to be beautiful, they are going to provide a canopy and a shade for our community that is going to be really, really special and important. And I'm just proud of who we are now and who we're becoming, and I'm excited to see that in the next number of years. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Mr. Fleming?
No comments tonight.
Mr. Soltis?
Oh, that was great. Okay. So full transparency, so Mark and I, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem, and I've been on for, what, 11 years? And so I never went anywhere on those trips, and so I was one that said, okay, I'll go this time. I didn't realize it was that much money, but yeah, so I might have to rethink that. And then in terms of the GFL, and so again, Mark and I knew about, when GFL first came into the city here, it was a mess. The guy that owned it, I can't, Rizzo was his name, I think, and so that guy was crooked as anything, and he was like trying to turn our wrists and arms to, for us to boat on it. And so, you know, it ended up working out, but, and my point is, is that I think with this new company, that it was oversight on their part, but I think they'll, they'll come around and they'll end up being okay, so that's all I got to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I want to just echo my condolences regarding the shooting that happened this weekend, but you know, I can't, I can't even talk about it, just hold the people that you care close to you. And actually, that's, that's it. I have nothing else to add to this. The time is 8:15, and our next meeting will be July 8th. Meeting adjourned. Good night. I couldn't even read the articles.